Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Here.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Pete Festerson?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to take this minute to acknowledge the series that's been running in the World Herald this week about our progress in North Omaha and our progress on poverty and economic disparities throughout the community. I think it's some of the most important work we can be doing as a city. I know Councilman Gray was worn ragged over the weekend with Native Omaha days, but had a wonderful time, and I think it's a great indicator as well of how much progress we are making. I know we all feel strongly about it. We have our budget discussions this afternoon and tonight, and the next few weeks, I think those budget priorities will reflect our commitment to those issues, and so I just wanted to point out how important we think that all is and celebrate the success for now, even though we know we have many more challenges to address as a community in that respect. I also want to acknowledge that we had 300 kids here in this room earlier this week from the Step Up Program. It was fun to see them, a great group of kids. A number of us spoke to them in terms of a mock city council event to make sure they understand how to engage in public affairs, and we welcome that engagement. So, I wish them all the best as well, and with school starting, a successful and safe school year. And I think it's a big reason, or part of the reason, why we've avoided some of the challenges that other communities have seen this summer in the Midwest such as Chicago, Kansas City, and St. Louis. So, a very successful program I know we'll all support. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The Council thanks you for being with us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six. The mayor's veto for the amended policy for maintenance of roadways within the city of Omaha is a replacement to all previous city policies regarding roadway maintenance. B is communications supporting the policy.
Are...
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? There is no motion?
There's no motion. Item fails due to lack of motion. The veto stands.
Thank you. Next item?
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Items 7 and 8 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Item nine, an application to consider, a Class D liquor license for Inseptum Finnis LLC, doing business as Over Easy, 16859 Q Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Nine is today. Proponents, please.
(inaudible).
Yeah, item nine, if you're in favor of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, then you need to come on down and talk to us then.[224.12][224.12](laughing). Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kent Bartholomew. The business address is 16859 Q Street here in Omaha.
Thank you. And you're just here to answer any questions that we may have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
(inaudible).
Moved and seconded to approve item nine, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine, approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item ten, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for Boyd &amp; Charlie's BBQ Number Two LLC, doing business as Boyd &amp; Charlie's BBQ Number Two, 1410 and 1418 South 60th Street. A is communication from the chief building inspector regarding a permit requirement for the proposed outdoor area. B is communications in support of the application.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Ten is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Council. Can I say Persson's or Councilman and Amy?
Members. Council members.
Council members, alright. Perry Beers with Boyd &amp; Charlie's Barbecue, address 1410 South 60th. I brought the two young men with me today that's going to be running this operation, Nate Ruffino and Lee Wies. I thought maybe it was time to get them involved and see what we have to go through to make this happen. We are here applying for liquor license.
Thank you.
You bet.
Are there any other, just to answer questions that we might have? Alright, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, on behalf of Midtown, I'd like to welcome you and your business and share with you our thanks for your investment in the neighborhood and your willingness to be a good neighbor to the Exarvan Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association that meets just right up the street a little south of you once a month at the Lutheran Church. A lot of people in the neighborhood excited to try out your place, and for those of us who don't know, the Elcorn operation, maybe take a minute and just tell us a little bit about what your offerings are and why we should all stop in.
Okay, sure. I can do that. We're actually 14 years old as of the 29th of July, so we've been around a while. These two young men have been with me from day one. When we opened 14 years ago, we didn't know what barbecue was. In fact, the guy that was supposed to help us get open about two days before we were open, he didn't show up. So, we did it on our own, went through all the trials and errors and the good and the bad and all that stuff, and thanks to a great community like Elcorn, we survived and have grown enough to where we feel like we want to stick our toe in the deep water, which is Omaha. So, we bought the building. These two young men are heavily, heavily involved financially, so if we don't get the job done, they might be living in tents.[411.62][411.62](laughing). As far as our product, we specialize in barbecue, but we have comfort food as well that we serve during the weeks, lunch specials and stuff like that. Our, we also do a lot of catering. Our number one objective in this community is to be a great neighborhood friend to our neighbors there as well as to the city of Omaha, to give back. As we have been blessed, we want to be giving something back to our community. So, that's what we're going to be working on, and we think we're about, hmm, six weeks out from opening. Unless the city throws us any more curveballs, we'll be open. And so, we look forward to the opportunity to be part of Omaha, and these two young men know that all eyes are on us. Everything we do is a reflection not only on our business, but in our last name as well. And so, our, we're excited, and we're excited to be here today. So, please give us a liquor license.
Thank you.
And for those of us looking to locate you, it's 60th and Woolworth, right?
Yeah, it's right. Exactly.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
We're just, I always reference Pointers Jones East Taco. They've been around forever. Or the side, it's now Trax Bar, I guess.
Right.
So, yeah.
Alright, well, I would make a motion to approve contingent upon getting the permits.
Moved and seconded to approve item 10. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, Councilpeople.
Thank you.
Try to stay out of the tents, guys.[515.62][515.62](laughing).
Item 11, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for Pragati International LLC, doing business as Persis Biryani Indian Grill, 2012 North 117th Avenue, Suite 101.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Item Number 11, proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
(inaudible). We do have time.
Okay, I would just ask for one weekly over so that maybe we can reach out. Since this is a new application and a new location, I haven't had any interaction with the applicant. I think we'll give him a week and ask him to come down.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to lay over item 11, one week. There are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider, a Class D liquor license for Casey's Retail Company, doing business as Casey's General Store, number 28861202, South 13th Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Name and address for the record, please. Sherri Thomas, 1202 South 13th.
Okay, and you all are here to answer any questions that we might have?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, first of all, thank you for running such a nice business there, and I don't know if you've heard, there's a lot of activity in terms of redeveloping and reinvesting on the 13th Street corridor and a lot of good things happening. So, I did receive some communication expressing a little bit of concern because you still are in an area of high poverty, and there's the Pine Street Housing Tower nearby, and so there was, the concern was that would there be, if you started to sell distilled spirits on top of the beer-only license that you have, would there be a willingness on your part with regard to the distilled spirits not to sell the 50 milliliter or 375 ml liter? And that's on the distilled spirits only. I know there's no restriction on your beer license, so we wouldn't ask that, but would you agree to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also just to say, we keep it under lock and key too, in the cabinets, and we have strict guidelines on selling as well.
Okay, I want to thank you for being good neighbor in that regard and wish you well in your business and make a motion subject to that condition and agreement.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, an application to consider, a Class D liquor license for La Esmeralda Inc., doing business as La Esmeralda Package, 3215 Q Street. The applicant has withdrawn this application. We just need a motion to withdraw it from the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, a request to appoint Robert Steider as manager of B&amp;R Stores Inc., doing business as Super Saver 20 for their Class C liquor license located at 5710 South 144th Avenue.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Rob Steider, 9610 Glass Ridge Court, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm the spirits director for B&amp;R Stores and willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, welcome, Pat and Lauren. Maha is such a wonderful event in our city. Been in Exarvan Village now for...
This is our ninth year.
Yeah, since the flood, right?
(laughing) Oh, I'm sorry, in Exarvan Village, after six years, yep.
And I want to congratulate you because last year, after your event, I did not receive one complaint. So, it's your, you usually average one, maybe two, but none this past year, so maybe they liked the music. I don't know. It was, it's always good, but maybe it was pleasing to the ear of the people who normally contact me. So, if you want to tell us a little bit about your lineup this year so you can have a chance to promote it for a minute?
For sure. Well, first of all, thank you for having us in hearing today. Our lineup this year is another variety of genres. We always feature local musicians, so we're excited to have everyone from the Omaha Girls' Rock Crew, who are, you know, 10 to 16-year-olds, all the way to our headliners this year, Run the Jewels. We've been impressed despite a number of big events, one of them being Lady Gaga happening on August 19th this year. Ticket sales are on par with what was historically our best event in 2015, and so we're really proud that the community is excited about the event and showing up to support it.
Well, either that or that was the best poker face.[890.62][890.62](laughing). Right?
Good.
Okay, but you have been selling out the venue, which is really exciting, and the people who volunteer is always a big army of people, so it's a great event. I'm happy to support it again, and again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Second.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also too just wanted to commend you on the work you're doing. I mean, I think, I'm pleased to hear about the ticket sales and the pace being the same as last year because, as you pointed out, there are a lot of big shows coming that, those very two weeks, and I think it's an indication that not only are they coming for the music, but they're coming for your event, which was the whole point in the first place, right? So, I think you can say you've achieved that goal, and we look forward to helping you progress in the future too. I know, Pat, you're a covering drummer, right? And you also had the distinction of being the public works director's son-in-law, right?[944.12][944.12](laughing). But more importantly, I see that his daughter, his granddaughter is here, Lauren. I assume she's a proponent too, right? She's a big fan. Okay.
She was going to do the speaking.
Want to wave to your grandma, or to your grandpa, Lauren?[957.51][957.51](laughing). Alright, excellent. Well, I seconded the motion, and we look forward to being there. I know I'll be there too, and look forward to another great event. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the support.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 15, and there are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 16, a request to approve special designated liquor licenses for Second Wind Inc., doing
business as Crescent Moon, 3578 Farnham Street, for Beer Garden on September 22nd, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and September 23rd, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Candace Gladwin, address 3578 Farnham Street, and I'm here to answer any questions for the Crescent Moon.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item 16, and there are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Number 17 through 19 were held on July 25th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve items 17 through 19. There are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 17 through 19 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on Agenda Items Numbers 20 through 53 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. We are going to take Items 39 and 40 off of the consent agenda for other public hearing. Any proponents? Seeing that there are no proponents or opponents, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
It's moved and seconded to approve Items 20 through 38 and 41 through 53. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 20 through 53 are approved minus the 39 and 40 that were removed, seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve the nomination of Adam L. Burton Boulevard as a commemorative street name on Spalding Street between 36th Street and 36th Avenue.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Ladies and gentlemen, after all that time, she's going to be the spokesperson for you. You all were debating for a while.
Our actual spokesperson is, has not made it here, so I'm filling in.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Regina Dell. I'm representing St. Mark Baptist Church at 3616 Spalding Street. I have with me Christine Harrison.
Christine Harrison, 3616 North 42nd Street.
Who was the, is spearheading this effort, and also with me, Mrs. Dorothy, Dorothy Burton.
My name is Dorothy Burton. My address is 801 Arben Lane in Papillion, Nebraska, 68046.
And also our current pastor of St. Mark Baptist Church, Reverend Alvin P. McCruel.
My name is Alvin P. McCruel. Address 10708 Jamestown Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68123.
Reverend Adam L. Burton was the pastor of St. Mark Baptist Church for 30-plus years. He started off as the interim pastor and later was installed as the permanent pastor. He served St. Mark well. He served the community. He served even internationally, going on to mission journeys to Haiti, and he was very much involved with the church, his church family, and the community. And after his passing on January 26th of 2016, he's been very missed, and we wanted to do something to commemorate him. And it was Sister Harrison's idea to do this commemorative designation of the street in front of our church as very fitting. He was involved with the community, and we feel that it would be a nice reminder for the community in the St. Mark area to remember him in this way.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to speak?
I'm not going to be redundant because she said everything I was going to say, but I am the wife of Pastor Adam L. Burton for 45 years, and I just want to thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor?
I would like to, for the council, to be aware of the fact that not only that, but Pastor Burton also served in the United States Air Force, where he was honorably discharged after he finished his career. He served his country well and was honorably retired from the United States Air Force. Not only that, but Pastor Burton was a member of the Baptist Pastors Ministries Conference, a pastor and served with the New Era Convention of Nebraska, and also was a member of the International, excuse me, Inter-Denominational Ministerial Alliance here of the area, and he has served this community well. He has been a spiritual example for many, and I do believe that by his life and his service in this area, that he has helped to reduce the crime rate in this city by those who were touched by his life and were spiritually moved to take a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or are you, well, thank you for coming down. We appreciate it, and I would like to know when the, when the street naming is going to officially be done because I'd like to be there.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, seven to zero. Sorry. Item 40, a resolution to approve the nomination of Robert Swanson Drive as a commemorative street name on Davenport Street between 78th Street and 80th Street.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 40 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Barber. I'm the applicant that started this process. My address, I'll give the post, 7811 Davenport Street, American Legion Post One. I've never done public speaking, so please bear with me. I met Bob a little over three, three and a half years ago. My wife and I were looking for something to do on a Saturday, and she noticed a posting for a run, a veterans' run. So, I said, "Let's go." We went down, got all signed up, got a Coke, sat down next to this man with a long white Introduced himself as Bob, Bob Swanson. He's the most polite, respectful man I've ever met, certainly the most courteous biker I've ever met, along with the other American Legion riders. He invited my wife and I to go ahead and ride along with him, and so he led and we followed, and each of the stops, we visited a little bit more. He introduced us to more of American Legion riders, and by the end of the run, he finds out that I'm a veteran, whips in his jacket, pulls out his applications, hands me one for the American Legion, one for the American Legion Riders. The following Monday, I'm down there signing up. He's introduced me to a whole new way of life as far as service and doing for others and very seldom ever thought of himself. The day that he passed, he was going out promoting the POW MIA chair that he had put in, or we all helped have put in, to Warner Stadium. I can't say enough for the man. Every other Sunday, I'm down serving meals because I didn't even know that, at the Siena Francis House, I didn't even know that Bob was down there doing that with Vet Help One. So when he no longer could, I take it upon myself to step in his place and continue his work. As of the time of his passing, he'd already served over 3,000 meals to the homeless and veterans. I really don't know what else to say other than his favorite line was "Sacrifice is meaningless without remembrance." I found it after his service only proper to have a sign put up in front of the post with his name and the word "Drive" after it because symbolizing his drive and determination to do for others.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Mike Shrek-Roviskevich. I'm the ALR commander of Post One. I knew Bob for several years and so forth, and some that he's always done for veterans, our community, and our state. He's very, was much into legislations. We've got the flagline here that he's brought here and so forth that's due to him. Pilgrims' flag that was put on Pilgrim's Tonnage got wiped out by the twin tornadoes. He was just passing through, and they had concrete blocks up there with just a little home flag on there. I went, "Whoa, this can't work." So we came back, made some phone calls. The next thing you know, they got a 30-foot pole, a flag, and memorials, everything for him to help. And then we gave a few thousand dollars to the kids in the area and that as well. You go to rest area in Nebraska, on I-80, anywhere, any other rest areas, there's a sign up there to support our troops. Robert Swanson with our chapter, we got together and made that happen along with the state and so forth, because you've got to have them guys involved. But we put the signs up there. At bureaus, when we was having trouble with the so-called Baptist Church and that, he went in and got legislation so that stopped some conflict, had them move back because it wasn't right, that they're calling peoples murderers and so forth, as the families walking into the church. That was very, very disrespectful. So that's what allowed him to have to go even do that, to back these people up a little bit. And we would try to protect in between, but there were some legal issues coming. So, I mean, he has done everything that you can possibly think of a veteran. This is stuff for you. And to honor him, to have this street just commemorative, his wife and his daughters are just totally awed by everything going on. We're also having a corn dog classic. We are going to name the street hopefully with approval on September 16th at 7811 Davenport. You're all welcome to come on down. Be glad to have you there and appreciate your approval on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. First, let me say a thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And then thank you for that presentation as well. It was very well done, even though you say you haven't done much of that. You did a really good job. When this application came through for consideration in my district, I reached out to Richard and also the post. And it was not lost on me that what a fantastic individual Bob Swanson must have been, given your high opinions of him.
Yes.
Is, I'm sorry. But also the fact that it was near unanimous. I mean, a post full of exceptional individuals, all say, "Yes, this is the person who should have this renaming in front of the post," is a very significant matter. So I'm very much in support of this as well and look forward to coming to the ceremony on September 16th. And I think I'll be seeing you tonight as well, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Moved in second to approve item forty. There are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item 54, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of $50,000 for the pending lawsuit of Laura Sosa versus the City of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number 54 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Oh, Ms. Melton.
Hit that before. I just want to come back and reconsider another item, but...
After this one?
After this one, if I could, or at some point at the end, I have number 11.
Sure. Second, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 54 is approved, seven to zero.
Ms. Melton?
I would like to move to reconsider number 11 on our agenda.
Moved in second to reconsider number 11 on the agenda. No lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to reconsider is approved, seven to zero.
Item 11?
Yes, my name is...
Name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Sinwas Rawanguru. Yeah, Mike, like the Paragati International LLC, like Francis Biryani Indian Grill. Address is like 201 to North 117th, like Avenue, like suite number is 101 Omaha 68164. Actually, we opened like a recent, like the Indian restaurant kind of thing. We want to apply, we already apply like liquor license.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Are there any other... Is that your only... Is that your statement?
Yeah.
And you're here to answer any questions, right? If we have any?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? CNN, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
Please.
Okay, so in order to vote on the item today, we'll have to have a motion to suspend the rules, because according to council rules, the item would have to be voted on at the next council meeting. It'll just take a supermajority vote.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Second, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. I need a motion to re-instate.
Okay, I'll say that.
There you go. Now you can... Roll call.
Okay. Item 55, a resolution to approve the Habitat for Humanity Adams...
We have to re-instate the rules.
Oh.
Yeah, roll call.
We will do that then. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Okay. The motion to re-instate the rules is approved, seven to zero.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 55, a resolution to approve the Habitat for Humanity Adams Park Project to Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located between 30th and 32nd Streets and Pinkney and Emmett Streets in an amount up to $350,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Trying to get this area all right. So this particular project is the second redevelopment in the Adams Park area by Habitat for Humanity. And the lots that you see highlighted in blue are the 18 single-family homes, or will represent the 18 single-family homes that will be built over the next two years. Nine of them will be completed next year, and then the following, or remaining nine will be completed in 2019. There's a lot of revitalization that has been taking place and has been in the news that I'm sure you all are aware of. These, this particular area was very much blighted with a lot of vacant land, deteriorated properties, and a lot of overgrown brush and trees. So there's a lot of site clearance that will take place and site preparation. So TIFF will help with that. And as was mentioned, 350,000 in TIFF and a total investment of approximately $3.58 million in, not an additional, I should say, 3.58 million into this neighborhood. So with that, I would ask for your approval, and I do know that Representative of Habitat is here if you should have any specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? CNN, public hearing is closed. Moved in second to approve item 55. No lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 55 is approved, seven to zero.
Item 56, a resolution to approve the Blackstone Depot Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3812-3820 Harney Street in an amount up to $860,000 as an amendment requested by the planning department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 56 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. We have another Blackstone project. There's a lot of activity happening in the Blackstone area. We've seen a lot of revitalization over the last year, four years. But this particular property is located here along Harney Street. This is 38th Avenue and where these, the blue shaded areas. What was there originally were three single-family homes. Two of them were non-conforming. And as development has continued in an effort to continue to revitalize and bring more density into the neighborhood, the developer saw an opportunity to redevelop this site into one, one five-story building that will house 56 market-rate apartments with 23 garage spaces underneath. This will involve about 860,000 in TIFF for site preparation, acquisition, and architectural and engineering type fees. And the total investment, additional investment into this area is a little over 8.2 million. We do have the developer here. If you should have any specific questions, with that, I would ask for your approval. I will add that they have volunteered another 15,000 in, from their TIFF contribution to go into the Midtown Public Improvement Fund, and that is to help with any additional public improvements or public enhancements along the Farnham Street corridor within the BID or Blackstone Business District, in case there are some other improvements that are called upon. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Matt Dwyer, Greenslake Development, one of the two developers on the project, 3814 Farnham, Suite 203. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? CNN, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Matt, if you could come up. As I understand it from the elevations that I saw, this is essentially in design a sister property to the Union and the Depot, further east and north.
Yeah, Matt Dwyer, 3814 Farnham.
Excuse me, west and north.
Yeah, yeah. So Blackstone Station and Blackstone Union. Blackstone Station was built on 38th and Farnham, so directly across, excuse me, directly across the street. And Blackstone Union was built on 41st and Harney, both brought on last summer. So, yeah, this is sort of a phase two, if you will.
Well, it's your momentum and the neighborhood's momentum is undeniable, and this project represents just another step in the right direction for the neighborhood. There continues to be excitement over it. The thing I think that we need to comment on in terms of achieving, one of the important goals of our city is improved density along mass transit routes and alternative transportation. And you're achieving those goals with this project, and I know there's another one in the pipeline coming. But I'm thankful for your investment and your steadfast commitment financially and personally to that neighborhood. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, and thanks to the council. This stuff doesn't happen without TIFF. I mean, and so your support over the years has been meaningful. So, thank you very much, and we look forward to alternative transit options in the future.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Harding.
Yeah, one question, Matt, or Bridget. The 15,000 you mentioned you brought up, is that included within the 860? Or is that above and beyond the 860?
It's included in the 860.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Because I like to do the math. So another TIFF project that's well within the boundaries in terms of the percentage of the project cost for, right a little over 10% on this one, too.
Yeah, it seems like they typically are in that 10 to 15% range. So, yeah, we're on the low end of that.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. It has been moved in seconded, but we have to move the amendment first. Moved in seconded to move the amendment. No further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. Second, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 56 is approved as amended, seven to zero.
Thanks again, everybody.
Item 57, a resolution to approve the Zone Six Apartments at Exarban Village Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6460 Francis Street and 6465 Shirley Street in an amount up to $1,625,568.
Public hearing on agenda item number 57 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. A project in the Exarban Village area. This is Zone Six, which again is the last zone in the Exarban Village redevelopment plan to be redeveloped. The two sites before each a day represent what's highlighted in blue. These are two separate multifamily structures, each of them five stories, and there will be a total of 108 units combined of the two structures. There is about 136 total parking stalls that will be provided for the tenants. Six of, 66 rather, are within the two structures as garages. 29 of those stalls will be surface lots at adjacent surface parking lots, and then 41 of them will be parking stalls that are leased from the HDR parking structure that will be right here and is currently under construction. This particular project again continues the redevelopment in developing out of the Exarban Village redevelopment plan, continues with that. There's a mix of one and two and studio apartments. It involves some, some site preparation, architectural engineering fees, acquisition costs, that's what the TIFF covers, which is about 1.63 million, and it involves another investment into the area of about 15.8 million. And we have a representative of the developer here if you should have any specific questions. With that, we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, council. Barb Terry, Alchemy Development Business Address, 1925 South 64th Avenue, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerry, Mr. Jerem?
Yes, thank you. Maybe first Bridget. Let me just comment while you're working your way up. This project in Zone Six on the northeast and southeast corners of the parking garage for the HDR development, is there any Zone Six contribution to the Exarban, or has that already been made?
Yes. All of the contributions that we were collecting have already been made.
Okay. So in terms of the public infrastructure participation that's been taken care of earlier?
Correct.
Okay. Now, Barb, if you could come up, let's talk about your exciting project here. During this development, one of the frequently recurring questions I received from people in the Exarban neighborhood just to the east was, "Oh, my goodness, is there going to be any screening to this big concrete garage?" Because they saw the first one go up that really wasn't screened, and one of the, the project first was in the build-out phase just south of there. And now they'll see this, and you are offering not only a high-quality product for multifamily housing, but you will be screening on the corners with an attractively designed product. So do you want to tell us a little bit about your investment? I know you have the Q and the Pinhook, but tell us a little bit about it.
Well, it's going to be a mix of studio ones and twos. With Pinhook, it was about 60, 40% twos to ones. With Q, we went way the other way, and it's probably 75 to 80% ones in studios. This one, we're going to bring some more twos back. It's a little bit higher-end and probably a little less focused on students, so two bedrooms for downsizing.
Right. And that's one of the things probably a lot of people don't realize is the number of retired couples that are moving into Exarban Village. And I know Broadmoor to the east is full of them, and you're probably seeing that demand, too.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, thank you for your investment, and I look forward to seeing this come out of the ground. And don't forget, your neighbors do track the start time at 7:00 AM, and they'll let me know if you start early.
Well, I will tell you, Bert had to complain to Naal because their start time was a little early, because he actually lives in...
I know he does, yeah.
So he'll track it really well, I'm sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Moved in seconded to approve item 57. There are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
So, he'll track it really well, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. Moving seconded to approve item fifty-seven. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-eight, a resolution to approve the Centerline Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at seven zero zero one Oak Street in an amount up to two million nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. Last TIF project is just a little bit south and a little bit west of the Exarban Village Here is West Center Road going west, Seventy-second Street north to south. So, here is the site, highlighted in blue. And what the developer saw was an opportunity to help what was, was going to be a development several years ago. It was a failed development. They had some foundations in the ground. It never, pardon the pun, got off the ground, completed. So, the developer saw an opportunity to take advantage of the market demand for apartment units, particularly with the growth and redevelopment in the Exarban Village area with HDR coming on and knowing there will be many people looking for apartments. So, the site plan, sorry, I will go this way. Here's Seventy-second Street. This is Oak Street, and this is Seventieth Street, so north-south. So, the site is right here. The building will be kind of in a J shape. So, this is where the building will be located, and there will be two structures that are connected, and there will be underground parking. They're each five stories, and there will be a total of a hundred and fifty-eight market-rate units, a mix of one, studios, ones and twos, you've kind of seen that, that pattern. And then surface parking, there's a total of two hundred and twenty-one parking stalls that are provided. A hundred and six are in the garage, about a hundred and fifteen are on the surface. So, for a total of two hundred and twenty-one. Here is a rendering. So, this is the southwest corner. So, you can kind of look into what looks, appears to be that J shape, and you can see where the surface parking is. This is Seventy-second Street to kind of give you that bearing, and then that off-ramp. And this would be Seventieth, and this is Oak. And then another view is the northwest corner of the site. And this is kind of the edge of that J going around. So, again, another opportunity to provide housing to a very hot demand for apartment units in the city, as well as to help a project get, or a site not remain in a blighted condition, undeveloped. It'll move forward, it'll become productive land. The total amount of the TIF is a little over two point nine million, with an estimated investment into this area of a little over twenty-three point five million. And again, the developer is here. If you should have any other questions, with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. Julie Stavnek, Jay Development Company, twenty-four thirty South Seventy-third Street. We are the owner and developer, and will be the manager of the company. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Okay, Julie, Jay Development. One has to ask, with the design of your project, is there any coincidence?
You know, it's, it was really accidental, but.
Come to the mic. Come to the mic, if you would, please.
Julie Stavnek, Jay Development Company, twenty-four thirty South Seventy-third Street. No, the J, the shape of the building really was accidental.
Well, I applaud your commitment to this. This site has remained just basically a large parcel with a bunch of foundations sitting on it, except for the Montessori school on the east end. And that school will stay, correct?
That, yes, correct. We think that'll be a great amenity, actually, to our residents, so.
And since the new sixty-eighth street went in that this council approved as a part of the Baxter Arena, you're now connected to that whole Exarban Village directly.
Yeah, the walkability and access from vehicles is great. Thank you.
Well, this is a large investment, and I wish you well, and thank you for your commitment to that part of the city.
Thank you all, too.
Motion to approve. Moving seconded to approve, Mr. Harding.
One more question, sorry. Remind me, if, have you, you are also, I want to show the commitment you guys have made to this site as well, too. Your offices are going to relocate to this area as well.
Yeah, we're still, we're still considering that. We're, we have a lot of other projects in the community that we're looking at. So, my business partner lives in Iowa, and so we're trying to figure out if we'll be closer to downtown or in this area. I live in Dundee, so it takes me eight minutes to get to work now. So, of course, I'm pushing for this building, but we're committed to staying in Omaha, and our office will be in the region for sure.
Thanks for your investment.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve, and no further lights. Roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven F, agenda items fifty-nine and sixty shall be laid over three weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven D, the public hearings on agenda items sixty-one and sixty-two shall be held on the third reading. Item sixty-three, an ordinance extending the limits of the City of Omaha by annexing Lake Cunningham Hills, SAD three twenty-six, located northwest of Eighty-first Avenue and Lake Cunningham Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. I do understand that there are a couple other agenda items, number sixty-four and sixty-five, that go along with this year's annexation packages. So, my remarks will be about all of them. And then, obviously, if you have individual questions about the other agenda items, I'd be happy to answer those. But just wanted to walk through with you the annexation package that is in front of you this year. As you know, there are three areas. This is probably the smallest package we've ever done under Mayor Sothers' administration, but it is a very financially solid package. Again, our goals remain the same. Those were to eliminate the islands, be revenue positive for the city, and not compromise public safety. The three areas of land total approximately two hundred and ninety-nine acres. As previously mentioned, Lake Cunningham Hills, which is up in the Lake Cunningham area, West Dodge Place, which is approximately the northeast corner of a hundred and Eightieth and Dodge, as well as Pacific Springs Village, which is the northwest corner of a hundred and Sixty-eighth and Pacific. Total population that would be coming in upon approval of the annexation package this year is approximately eight hundred and sixty-three residents. Again, that's based off of the 2010 census. And again, continues our commitment to a growing city and maintaining a top forty position within the largest cities in the United States. The city would see an increase of a hundred and nineteen million dollars in new valuation. The overall debt ratio to the package is approximately six point three percent. And if you remember, as we go through the annexation process, one of the goals that we try to take a look at is we're trying to figure out and put that puzzle together is to make sure that the debt ratio is below five percent for those areas that we do annex. Financial projections and highlights for over the ten-year period that we do study would be approximately six point five million dollars in property tax to the city, approximately three point three million dollars in sales tax, seven hundred and five thousand dollars in street and highway funding, for a total revenue of approximately ten point nine million. When you start to look at the cost of city services that are factored in and increased over the lifetime of those ten years that we looked at, the cost of city services equates to about four point nine million, as well as the debt that we would take on upon annexation is about four point six million, leaving a balance of approximately two point five million dollars. Again, as I mentioned, all areas are positive over the ten years for the city. We do eliminate an island here, if you look at this particular corner, with Pacific Springs Village coming online. And probably of most note, the property taxes for the property owners and the three SIDs that we are considering for annexation would all have a reduced property tax levy. The proposed package, the average property tax rate reduction is about four hundred and ninety-eight dollars for every one hundred thousand dollars of valuation. We did hold a public meeting with the areas back at the end of June, prior to the July Planning Board where this was heard. And we would ask for your approval of this year's annexation package, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Cassie, if you would. I'm supportive of the package as well, and I think it is a, an example of measured annexation that is contiguous and provides consistency in city services. I think it's appropriate approach at this point in time as we seek to catch up on our street needs and our ambitions for a fifth police precinct and coverage around the city in that respect. Would you mind putting the map up again, just for one minute? I thought of a question there when I, when you were speaking. So, the one that, that will become part of City Council District One is Lake Cunningham Hills in the blue there. There's also a fair amount of other communities that aren't yet into the city right there, but that I would anticipate becoming part of the city as we continue to become contiguous in that, up to Lake Cunningham there. And if you can't answer this question off the top of your head, that's okay, but are the ones, to your knowledge, are the ones right there also prospects in the short term to make that a contiguous movement?
Councilman Murf Festerson, to answer your question, this general area, there is some areas that are actually SIDs that we would go through that normal evaluation process like we would. There's also a fair amount of ground that is, some of it developed, some of it not developed. Some of it, I think, is kind of a hodgepodge. There might be a couple even farm plots within there as well that would just be outside of city limits. But as we would continue to look at that area, try to fill in the gaps to provide continuity and services, we would obviously take a look at SIDs as well as that other ground to see what benefits there are there. You know, I know we've looked at this area in the past, some of the SIDs that are there that are established do have some financial complications that makes it difficult at the moment to annex. I think you've heard me say, if I had a crystal ball, I would use it. I don't have a crystal ball. But again, they do get evaluated every year, and as we would move through, that was something that we would definitely take a look at. You've heard me say before, and I'll say it again, you know, the intent of the SID mechanism is to provide orderly growth, and then that is something that eventually the SIDs that were within our jurisdiction will eventually become part of city limits. What that timeframe looks like, all of those, you know, that's a little up in the air depending upon a lot of financial implications. But that is something that we would look in this particular area over time to make sure that that gap, that gap is closed.
Okay. I think it is just a matter of time, too, before that probably does happen, and it makes sense that it does happen. And I point that out for the reason of highlighting Lake Cunningham is a great asset also to the community. And I've talked with our Parks Director about making sure we are doing all we can to reach Lake Cunningham through the trail system from Democracy Park, and currently in the brown right there, but getting close to the yellow. And what a great asset Lake Cunningham could be if we start talking about our trail system and expanding our trail system around Lake Cunningham, much like Lake Zirinsky, which is one of our most popular trail systems in the city. So, that's part of my interest in asking that question, but also just because I think it does make sense that we're heading in that direction.
I would say we're on the same page of looking at that area and eventually closing that gap.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Next item.
Item sixty-four, an ordinance extending the limits of the City of Omaha by annexing Pacific Springs Village, SAD four oh two, located northwest of a hundred and Sixty-eighth and Pacific Streets.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-five, an ordinance extending the limits of the City of Omaha by annexing West Dodge Place, SAD four sixty-two, located northeast of a hundred and Eightieth Street and West Dodge Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-six, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars to provide partial funding for one part-time prosecutor in the Douglas County Attorney's Office Violent Crime Gang/Gun Prosecution Unit.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-seven, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, the Small and Emerging Small Business Program, to modify the program's definitions, certification criteria, and enforcement provisions.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
I appeared before the council in the first quarter of two thousand sixteen regarding protesting the handling of the demolition of the civic auditorium as it related to SEB This amendment to modify the existing ordinance has one of the items that's, that's to be modified, the enforcement provision. Within the body of the ordinance, you do have enforcement for ESBs and SBs that don't follow the rules, policies, and procedures of the program. And you also codify a penalty for noncompliance for contractors and subcontractors. What's missing is, what's the penalty for the city not following its own rules and requirements as it applies to this ordinance? I am also concerned that when I testified last year, there was a carve-out for professional services. And my question is, does this ordinance still apply to professional services, or is the carve-out still in place? And under what authority did the city, or does the city have to carve out professional services? At the time, we had a discussion about AC/EC and the fact that the administration had decided not to enforce the ESB rules as far as professional services was concerned. And I think Mr. Stube had stated in a council meeting that it was done to help relieve the burden of, of the ordinance on small shops, one or two member engineering firms. And after hearing that, I did a little research, and of the fifty, fifty-one or fifty-two, it kind of fluctuates, but right now, there's fifty AC/EC Nebraska Chapter members, and probably less than ten percent would qualify as a one- or two-person shop. So, my question becomes, why are we excluding professional services based on companies that only have one or two members, and they only represent less than ten percent of the body of, 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 of that category? And I guess my last, my last point or question is, no matter which department this ordinance gets left with to enforce, will there be adequate funding for that department as far as staffing to make sure that the enforcement is there, that all parties abide by what it, what the ordinance says? All city contracts should have SEB participation. With that, if you have any other questions for me, I'll sit down.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-eight, the city clerk has received the Transit Authority of Omaha twenty-eighteen budget and refers it to the Finance Department. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven D, the public hearings on agenda items sixty-nine through seventy-eight shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven C, the public hearings on agenda items seventy-nine through ninety-one shall be held on the second reading. Item ninety-three, motion that the city council meeting is to be recessed to seven PM tonight, Tuesday, August eighth, twenty-seventeen.
Second. Roll call.
No roll calls needed unless there's objections.
All right, thank you.
So, meeting is recessed at three oh six PM. So meeting is recessed at three oh six P M. Jerem Melton. Pauls, Polaramo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President. Item ninety-five, the public hearing for the recommended twenty eighteen budget for the city of Omaha, an affidavit of publication is on file for the city council meeting and for this public hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the public hearing for the twenty eighteen city of Omaha budget. I'm pleased to see many citizens willing to provide input on the recommended budget. Tonight's public hearing is conducted in accordance with the requirements of the city charter. To make tonight's proceedings as efficient as possible, we will follow procedures that have worked well in the past. I will ask city clerk Eliza Butler to describe the procedures for tonight's public hearing.
This public hearing is for the recommended twenty eighteen city of Omaha budget. There is a sign-in sheet at the entrance of council chambers, and council will call you to the podium in that order. We ask that you keep your comments limited to the budget and that you speak for no more than three minutes. The light at the podium will turn yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining in your time. Please summarize your comments at that point. When the light turns red, your time has expired. If you have written out your presentation, please consider stating your name and address and submitting the presentation for council members to review later. Your written comments will become part of the official record. Please note that council members and other city officials are here to listen to your comments. They do not respond or debate the issues tonight. Mr. President, that covers all the procedures for tonight's public hearing.
Thank you. After this public hearing, the budget review process continues. Council members will consider your input as we continue to review the recommended budget. We are scheduled to vote on the budget at our regular council meeting on Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty seventeen, at two P M. I ask everyone to be considerate of your fellow citizens by focusing your comments on the budget, staying within your allotted time, and by being respectful of views that may differ from yours. In addition, I ask that you turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. We will now commence with the first speaker, who is Doug Kagan, with Gloria Osterberry and Paul Romero in the queue.
Good evening. My name is Doug Kagan, four sixteen South one hundred thirtyth Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. This budget clearly indicates a financially healthy city. An eleven million general fund surplus carry forward, city bonded indebtedness falls for the next three fiscal years, per capita bonded indebtedness also decreasing. Interest income and rate of return on investments remains high. Although no property decrease, the mayor continues to unburden taxpayers by requesting private donors to fund projects like slum demolition and encouraging volunteerism. We commend this budget for strengthening traditional basic city services like parks, libraries, public safety, and infrastructure, street reconstruction, and resurfacing. Our taxpayer group continues to advocate eliminating funding for non-basic services and non-mandated programs to free additional dollars to reduce the unpopular restaurant tax or lower the property tax. Also, we advocate selling off city assets that lose money to free dollars to reduce these taxes. We advise both mayor and council to toughen labor contracts to end longevity, specialty, and other extra pay. Require retirees to pay more for their health insurance and then retire supplemental retirement benefits. We also encourage accelerated privatization of services in public works and parks departments like grounds maintenance and vehicle maintenance. Other suggestions include making additional interlocal agreements to purchase services, supplies, and equipment to control these escalating costs. Require street contractors to guarantee their street improvement work for a longer period. Utilize urban homesteading options that would allow entrepreneurs to assume titled properties scheduled for demolition, thereby accelerating rehabilitation of these properties. Merge the city law department prosecutorial duties with the county attorney office, and contact county government about renting space cheaper at its West Maple campus than leasing present facilities. Although the mayor, our city council, although the mayor, our city executive formulates the annual budget, city council members have the authority to suggest revisions. We sincerely hope that you all consider our suggestions in an atmosphere of cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gloria Osterberry. You have to give them to the clerk.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Osterberry of Augustana Lutheran Church in Omaha Together One Community. I live at five oh three six Pinney Street. Everyone needs a safe, decent place to live. That's why OTAC has appeared before you every year for the past seven years to advocate for the improvement of Omaha's housing and neighborhoods. That's why we have spoken in favor of increased funding in the city budget for demolition of condemned buildings and for, oh, I'm sorry. I'll take this mic. And for more, Housing Code Inspectors. Our interest in decent housing is why we so vocally supported creation of the Omaha Land Bank and the vacant and abandoned property registry. We're here today to make several requests with budgetary impacts for twenty eighteen and beyond. As this first slide shows, you have heard us and your constituents, and you have increased funding for demolition from just about a quarter million back between oh nine and twenty eleven to over one million this year. And Mr. Dowding, who works with the city council, just moments ago affirmed that that is the accurate figure. The private funds are not supplanting any of that figure, but are supplementing. So we commend the city council and Mayor Stothit for agreeing to put one point one million dollars for demolition in the twenty eighteen budget. Your commitment of public funding is leveraging another half million in private donations secured by the Omaha Land Bank. This is how public-private partnerships should work. Back in twenty thirteen, at Saint Pius Catholic Church, we asked many of you to put a million dollars in the budget for demolition until we significantly reduce the backlog of condemned structures. So the second slide shows the progress we are making. It shows the doubling in the total number of demolitions by Omaha and Habitat for Humanity combined when comparing two four-year periods. The next slide has the same message about how the increases in funding have impacted the number of demolitions, but shows the per-year averages each of those years. From thirteen to sixteen, the city averaged sixty-five demolitions per year and Habitat twenty. And so in the past four years, city funds have demolished three hundred and forty-two houses plus numerous commercial buildings that were condemned. According to Jay Davis and City Planning, due to these increased demolitions and getting owners to fix up, give away, or sell their properties, we have decreased from a backlog of eight hundred condemned houses down to about two hundred condemned properties. We celebrate what the city has accomplished since twenty thirteen in demolishing these buildings that are so dangerous.
Gloria, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, okay?
Okay. Well, eliminating the backlog is very important, but demolition should only be, is an unfortunate necessity, and we'd like to see these properties get into the hands of people who can quickly renovate and get them back into good use. Thank you very much for hearing your comments.
Next speaker, Paul Romero.
Good evening. My name is Paul Romero, and I'm a student at Creighton University, and I live at one zero zero five two Miami Circle in Omaha. I was born and raised in this wonderful city, and I am proud to call it my home. This summer, it has been my honor and privilege to work with Omaha Together One Community's Housing Action Team. When they called on me to do some research using the Douglas County G I S, I was not sure what to expect as I was new to the issue of housing. However, what I have found over these past few months of performing research actions is that there is a startling and clear pipeline which properties follow on their way to demolition. The first graphic shown displays this pipeline at the most basic level. These numbers were discovered using data retrieved by the Douglas County G I S on violations and the Omaha City Planning Department on demolitions. On June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, I exported a list of eleven hundred planning code violations in the city of Omaha from dogus.org. From this list, I removed all industrial, commercial, and duplicate violations with only housing code violations remaining. The total amount of housing code violations as of June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, came out to be nine hundred and ninety-five. From this list, I was able to determine that a total of five hundred and fifty-six homes were vacant, which calculates to around fifty-six percent of all homes with code violations as of June twenty-eighth. Through the city, we were able to determine that there are currently two hundred and sixteen homes listed on the vacant property registration ordinance that have yet to become resolved cases. Along with this, we discovered that there are eighty-five demolitions that have or will take place this year. Moving to the next slide, we see two graphics. The first was formulated using data from the Douglas County G I S. These seven zip codes displayed are those with the highest concentration of code violations in the city of Omaha. In fact, these seven zip codes account for seventy-three percent of all code violations in our city. Moving to the second graphic below, using data provided by the city planning department, we found that these same seven zip codes had the highest concentration of demolitions, accounting for eighty-seven percent of all demolitions in our city. After performing my research, it is clear to me that there is a pipeline that homes travel down before they are finally demolished. It starts with violations, with the deterioration leading to vacancy, which if not acted upon, will ultimately lead to demolition. There's no doubt in my mind that proactive solutions can and will fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Charles Gould.
Hi, I'm Charles Gould. I live at fifty-eight nineteen Williams Street. I'm a member of First United Methodist Church and Omaha Together One Community. At the heart of the problem for our neighborhoods and our city is the rate of deteriorating houses that are languishing in our system. Even when our forward-thinking city initiatives are in place, the process as it is functioning now is moving too slowly. Leaking roofs and shifting foundations will destroy these older homes before they can be rehabilitated. I know OTAC joins the city, the county, and the land bank in much preferring that we save these houses on the demolition list instead of destroying them. The predictability of the pipeline that Mr. Romero pointed out gives us a chance to get ahead of this problem, if we act quickly and if we act together. The city and the county and the land bank each has its role in slowing the rate of deterioration of the houses in our older neighborhoods. Step one, the city planning and inspection program needs to get houses with serious code violations onto the vacant and abandoned property registry as quickly as possible. Technology has improved the speed of inspection and follow-up, but it is not enough. Dedicated staff focusing on these fragile houses can move them through the system more quickly before the ravages of nature tear them down. Step two, use the fees paid to the vacant and abandoned property registry to secure these houses to keep people from squatting in them and doing even more damage. Open houses are a danger to our community, especially our first responders and our children. We must do all we can to secure these abandoned houses while the legal system works to transfer title. On the screen is one of the houses on the registry. It is owned by an individual. The problem here is that it is not secured. It remains open. Unless it is protected by being boarded up during the four years it will presently takes to move the house through the system, it will end up on the demolition list. Step three, the rate of foreclosures needs to be significantly increased. Foreclosing on tax lien certificates takes at least four years, and many vacant houses become worthless in that time. Currently, the vacant and abandoned property registration allows the city to foreclose on property once they are there two years. Once, excuse me, once there are two years of unpaid fees and penalties. OTAC believes that the city should reduce the period to one year when it is clear that the owner has abandoned the property. As you know, no budget stands alone. In this budget are the consequences of budgets passed, and future budgets will be determined by the choices we make in this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen McElroy.
My name is Karen McElroy. I'm a member of Holy Name Catholic Church and a member of OTAC. I live at twenty forty-six North Forty-Ninth Avenue. The OTAC housing team has found that rental property has been consistently a significant part of all the problems that we have examined. We know from our research that sixty-eight percent of the current code violations are rental properties. It is likely that a significant portion of the properties on the vacant and abandoned property registry are also. And we believe that of the three hundred and forty-two properties the city paid to demolish over the last four years were also at one-time rental properties, that the owners let deteriorate until they abandoned them. And as you see on this slide, about two-thirds of the code violations are now rental properties at six hundred and seventy-seven, and two-thirds of those rental properties with code violations are vacant. Now, looking at the second slide, there are six hundred and seventy-seven properties with code violations. Seventy-three percent of those are rental properties at four hundred and twenty. Here, once again, are the seven zip codes in the eastern part of our city. Once a neighborhood begins deteriorating and property values decline, the vitality of the neighborhood begins to ebb away. Good neighbors move away, and new ones hesitate to purchase a house where there are so many abandoned properties or empty lots nearby. Whole blocks and entire neighborhoods disappear through abandonment and demolition. This is a two-common occurrence in the eastern side of our city and communities. Our housing team knows that we need to work together with you to find solutions to rental property, especially in the eastern part of Omaha. Minor code violations lead us down the demolition pipeline. Our complaint-driven system may work well in healthy neighborhoods where ownership is a majority of the properties. But in neighborhoods with declining values and frequent mobility of renters because of substandard housing, the decline is quick and devastating to families living in these properties. Many renters are unlikely to complain about substandard housing conditions when they are afraid of losing their place to live. OTAC believes that rental properties with a history of code violations need to be inspected on a more periodic basis, not just the current tenants who may have the courage to complain. That is why OTAC encourages you to look closely at Council Bluffs, La Vista, and Lincoln, and what they are accomplishing now with their rental property and inspection ordinances. We look forward to having these conversations over the coming year with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is David McLeod. Is that right?
Good evening. My name is David McLeod. I live at five zero one two Miami Street, and I'm a member of Saint Paul United Methodist Church Benson, and I'm a member of the OTAC housing team. On May first, in front of three hundred and fifty OTAC delegates at Saint Leo, the great church, six of you agreed to work with OTAC to figure out how to deal with the problems of substandard rental properties in Omaha. As you can see from the information we have presented to you today, OTAC is digging in to understand the scope of substandard rental properties and what it is costing families and taxpayers who have to clean up the mess that unscrupulous owners leave behind. On July twenty-fifth, OTAC had a public meeting with the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance. Forty-five people came, and we learned about the life-threatening conditions like lead, asthma-causing pest infestations, and housing code violations. asthma-causing pest infestations, and housing code violations that are common in substandard housing. We learned that these problems are particularly common in rental properties where families feel vulnerable to losing their housing, so they don't ask landlords to make changes. They don't complain in a complaint-driven system. OTAC believes that the citizens of Omaha want housing to be safe and habitable for all families. We believe we have an obligation to work together to come up with solutions to the problem of substandard rental housing. OTAC continues to look forward to meeting with you to find solutions that best fit for, or the best for all of Omaha. We would also like to invite any person or group of goodwill to join us in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Chris Foster.
Chris Foster, 3413 California Street. I'm representing the Gifford Park Neighborhood Association in our support of One Omaha, and we think it's a valuable central contact, kind of a clearinghouse for information, tools, resources for our neighborhood associations to help strengthen them. They provide training programs, especially for leadership, which is, as neighborhoods like ours look for new leaders, it's really important. They've helped with the conferences like the NUSA Conference, which I'm displaying the T-shirt, and the in-conferences and other conferences that help out. The Director Julie Smith and One Omaha came to our recent Neighborhood Association meeting. We had an asset mapping session, very valuable, helped us kind of galvanize our priorities, strengths, weaknesses, which we acted on. And again, just to kind of continue the partnership of the City of Omaha and One Omaha, and we offer our support for them.
Thank you. Next up is Luis Jimenez. With Greg Yule, you'll be up front in the queue, and Willie Barney.
Luis Jimenez, 3126 Chicago Street. I really have no comments. I just want to congratulate all the councilmen, members, for their win, having said that lately to you guys. So, congratulations, Mr. Ben Gray, Mr. Christo, Mr. Pete Festerson, Vinnie Palermo, Rick Pauls, Rich Pauls, Brinker Harding, Amy Milton. Congratulations. And I'm not going to tell you how to do your jobs. I just want to say that when you listen to what people are saying, also listen to what is not being said, and if there are nebulous things, take the opportunity to provide clarity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next is Greg Yule. Greg, I think I gave you a little bad information earlier. I think you got three minutes instead of five, but three minutes. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Greg Yule, and I'm here speaking on behalf of MAPPA Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. We're located at 2222 Coming Street in Omaha. In your folders there, you have a brief one-pager that talks about the Heartland 2050 project. We're requesting funding. Funding requests go out to all the cities and counties in the Heartland 2050 area, and that's an eight-county region, the metropolitan statistical area. The one-pager in there talks about the overall idea. It's a community-driven initiative to think big picture and work towards a common vision in that eight-county region. And the executive committee over the past year has really winnowed in on transportation and walkable communities, improving quality of life is kind of the key focus of the initiative. And so, if you look in the inside-back cover of the annual report, which is also in there for you, you have a list of the steering committee. The three largest cities in the region, Omaha, Council Bluffs, and Bellevue, each appoint a member, as well as the participating counties. So, Cassie Pavan has been the mayor's appointee to the executive committee, and we work closely with Cassie, the mayor's office, as well as many of the city's staff as part of the project. And you also, I think, as you gaze through that list, see a number of names from throughout the community. We work very hard to ensure that there's good representation as part of the project. So, over the past year, the page before that lists, a couple pages, some of the key projects that we've been working on. So, this is page seven, over the past year. So, the chamber, with the chamber, we've done this regional market and site analysis, looking at industrial sites. We know that that's one of the key needs for our region. And also, this past year, we were very happy to have the first round of mini-grants, and the City of Omaha received one of those grants for the 13th Street Walkability Study, which will take a look at the 13th Street corridor from I-80 up through downtown to I-480, to look at improving a pedestrian-friendly environment in that region. So, they received $100,000 in funding from that Heartland 2050 mini-grant. So, the funding request to the city is about a 10 cent per capita that goes out to all the cities and counties. And we have great participation. Pretty much all the communities over 5,000 in the region participate in the funding request. So, for the City of Omaha, at about 10 cents per capita, that's a 40,000 request. So, we were identified at only 10,000 in the mayor's budget. So, we are here to request the remainder of that 30,000 for the full 40,000 in funding. And if you're not able to do the full 30,000, anything you could do would be much appreciated. It does send a signal that Omaha, as the largest city, the leading city in the region, is behind us and supports it. That sends a signal to the entire metropolitan area this is important. It's also important to some of our funders, we see funding from the Kiwet Foundation, iOS Foundation, Sherwood Foundation for this project. So, having some skin in the game, so to speak, is always important to the foundations, showing their support from the community. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Next is Willie Barney.
Good evening, council. Willie Barney, 12333 Coming Street, also with the Empowerment Network, 105 North 31st Street. First, I just want to thank the city council and the mayor for the investments that you've made specifically in our employment-related programs in North and South Omaha, the Heartland Workforce Solutions, the Step Up Omaha, and the initiatives that we have been pushing on together. I can report that we have seen reductions in violence. If you've seen some of the recent reports during the summer months, we've seen an 80% reduction in gun violence in North Omaha over the last 10 years. We've seen a 56% citywide reduction. We've also seen some, finally, some beginning to reduce the unemployment, which is a very, very positive thing. And obviously, with the partnerships between the city and the community and the school district, we've seen some increase in graduation rates. What I would appeal to you is to support the workforce development, both Heartland Workforce, the Urban League, the Step Up programs. I want to thank you for what you've already done, but we definitely want to take these programs, the year-round programs. And over the last 10 years, we have surveyed literally 7,000-plus people, primarily in North Omaha. Some of the areas that we really want to now accelerate the progress, and we have gaps that need to be closed. Continue focusing on job and job training. I've mentioned a number of times the demolition focus, but also the rehab focus. More and more, as we're walking the streets, talking to neighborhoods, we're seeing a lot of homes that still need a lot of work, and we want to address the, be able to address affordable homes in North and South Omaha. Can we turn those homes into affordable homes? Use labor in the community, and I know the planning department and others are looking at that. Might be another great opportunity to work with contractors in North and South Omaha as well. So, how do we use something that is a need that the community has addressed and use contractors in our own communities to rebuild and rehab those and put dollars towards that? The other thing that comes out very strong is the corridor development, 24th Street, 30th Street, and Ames. There's a lot of momentum, but if we can push forward and get additional city investments in those areas, we can create those nodes and expand them out into the neighborhoods with more businesses, stronger businesses, which leads to the last piece, is access to credit and capital. What can we do, working with the planning department, working with the mayor's budget, the city council, to make more dollars available for small businesses, which is the fabric and the growth of any community? So, again, we want to thank you for what you've done up to this point, but we definitely don't want to take our foot off the accelerator. Now is the time that Omaha can really move forward and close these gaps that we've all been working towards, but with job training, entrepreneurship, addressing that housing need that's out there, and making sure that we have access to credit and capital. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, Willie Barney is the last speaker. I will open the microphone briefly for anyone who may have forgotten to sign in or who may want to speak this evening. If we have none, thank you all for being here today. We appreciate the time that you have put into coming to a meeting that shows your concern for our city, and we would like to thank everyone for being here. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Needing adjourned at 7:30 PM.[1773.41]